The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Their first time was good business will be your public comments. Is there anybody on Zoom that has the public comment? Oh, no. No. I see a hand, but not the official yellow hand. So I'm not going to read the rules. You know, I have anybody here. Okay. All right. So we'll public comment. We'll move on to the research report.
Yes, I give an update to the mission on a few of the items that we're looking at. And it's not on the agenda right now. First, Circuit Court, we're still awaiting the environmental testing. I just gave a call to consultants this morning. They're rattling the chain scene where we're at on that. One of the things that that we haven't received that report, we're expecting it this last week. So we're trying to find out where we're at on that. I'm hoping to have certainty on that by the end of this week, and I'll send an email out to the commission. Just letting us know where we're at on that. One of the things that we did get an update on that was the title report that was previously done by the court is not as robust as it should be. So we will likely be doing a new title report on the specific area that we're looking at. Just to make sure we're clear on any easements or anything else that might impact development there. So by the next meeting, I'm hoping to have the results of the of the report and asking for direction from the mission on where to go on it. Also on the circuit court, Judge Hill reached out as part of the the legislative cycle, but as far as they're getting ready for the session and was asking if we needed to put additional monies, requests for monies in there. And we have eased put in a request for an additional $2.5 million just to make sure we're covered on any overrun because of the time and delays in the new site. So we're hoping that we don't have to use that, but we got the request in there to as a placeholder and see what the state legislature and the and the state court systems does as far as that request goes.
Will that be a match?
Unfortunately, it would be. And so this is part of the part of the delays and the new site changes there. We don't have that full impact on that until we get this, the geotech and the environmental back. But we are slated to request for additional funds. We don't have to chase it later on after after these reports are done. Um, also yesterday I attended the let's build Boardman housing kind of conference that the city Boardman put on at the at the ports facilities. Good discussion. In effect, they're looking for for options on how to address the middle income housing. More or less, they, you know, low income housing gets subsidized, high income housing, they got, they got the money to do it. It's that it's that those people in the average medium income range that's really impacted by things. There was easily, oh, you know, probably 75, if not more participants of it. People from the local area, not just Boardman, there's representatives from irrigan and Hepner there as well from the government. A lot of contractors, Chamber of Commerce, business representatives there. Really good discussion on on exploring different options on how to assist with that, that missing middle kind of housing solutions. What they'll be doing is they'll be creating some action teams and hopefully revisiting it and seeing if there's anything that they need to come. The county is in an interesting position because where we don't create subdivisions that would really create those kinds of things. Where there is more or less a facilitator and an enabler to assist the cities to take care of these issues and possibly assist in some of the programs they might be might engage in. But this is non binding, but it's a really neat kind of consortium of thoughts as they bring these things forward and bring these into consideration for us. So we'll see more of that. I wasn't able to attend at the very end. So I'm not sure when when the follow up is to find out from Brandon and check on that and let you know where we're going on this. From the county, we had representation myself attended and Daisy attended for planning as Tamara's out of the office for a conference. So and good participation. I have here, and one of the things I need help from, this is our this was an action that was started right before I got hired. This is a recodification of our county code. American Legal Publishing was contracted to do this. This is one of their, this is their draft copy of what our code and ordinances would be. The end result goal is to go through these, make sure they're up to date and then get it so it's all digital and online and accessible to our residents. We need to review this, and I would like to ask if we can get a representative from the Board of Commissioners to participate in that as we go through it and and review it and make sure things are good. The challenge I've seen is the last time we had a consolidated code was about 1984. And so there's some really easy corrections in here, like right now, the code reads that the Board of Commissioners appoints the board members of Pioneer Hospital Board, which doesn't even exist anymore. And so we really need to get these things updated. There's going to be a good read on it. And so if if I could have a volunteer to help assist on that, that'd be great. And so we're looking to do that over this next month, give feedback to American Legal Publishing so they can make corrections and and help us take a look at it. So any one of you have a particular interest in that?
I do.
As I said, you guys both have way more planning background than I have.
Okay, appreciate that. Well, they only sent us one hard copy and quite honestly, they consolidated the zoning code, old zoning code in this. And that was actually not part of their their proposal. So I've got to see if they are going to take that on or if we can just take that out of it and we'll get a copy of it for you to do it. We'll likely set up a couple of meetings to sit down, Valerie, myself, and probably either Greg or Justin, possibly also Bobby as the clerk to kind of go through it and make sure that this is the code that we need to go to. In effect, once we get this reviewed, it would go through a public hearing process because we would be more or less pulling all the code that's preceded this and replacing this as the new code. And so this gives us an opportunity to spot check any language, you know, correct it. There's still references to accounting court and, you know, it's interesting. I was looking through there and our irrigan facility on some of these documents is is mentioned as the courthouse annex, which is not how we refer to. So there's just a lot of little cleanup that we'll be going through and taking care of. Once we have those public hearings and that will enact this, we'll get it up and then American Legal Publishing will be hosting it. And it'll be accessible from our website. And so also if the zoning isn't taken care of this time, which for chefs in our effort, I hope it isn't because that makes it monumentally more of an effort. I will also be looking to do that for zoning, probably in the next year's budget, get that budgeted in so we can make sure that that's available. Cameron, Daisy, them do a great job of putting it up on our website, but it's not very searchable and really I think more people look at the zoning code than our other codes. And so we'll be looking into that as well. So thank you, Jeff. Last thing is had several meetings with in relation to the nitrate water issue and met with with representatives were from Willamette Partnership, Fort Worth with the Governor's Office, and had discussions with O R A on on several of the items. We're still waiting finally termination on the the grants from from Business Oregon. We've been told that we have the two technical advisory grants. And we're waiting word from the S E P fines that that the ports paying. Interestingly enough, we've heard that there's two other organizations that also apply for the use of those monies. And we haven't heard from the state. The person who heads up that took a prolonged vacation. So that's part of the radio silence. But I think they're still in reviewing and determining where they're at with those awards. And so as we get that, we'll be looking into those and making sure as we go forward considering public outreach for West Glen area. It's been determined that we'll need to go out and put an RFP for public engagement. So we've more or less told the O R A, we won't be meeting with them anymore because they have an interest in doing that. And that would muddy the water procurement. And so we'll be putting that out as an RFP for public engagement as well as when we get the grants for engineering activities. And so we're looking forward to take care of that. I know our original goal was the end of July to have those meetings with with some of these involvements from the governor and Willamette Partnership that's pushed it off a little bit. We'd still like to take care of it sometime into September, first part of October is what we're looking at now. Getting in with the with the communities and reviewing some of the options that are available there. And so and that that will directly tie into some of the discussion about the water consortium that we have on the agenda today. So there's a lot of things going on that way. That's a short list of some of the big topic items that we're we're looking at. The fires, we've been having the E O C fortunately outside of the blaze that popped up on bombing range. The fires from Lone Rock and and the other fires to the south have generally, the alarm has been dialed down. The it's been Lone Rock is can be considered controlled and contained this time. And the other one seems to be more threatening on the south side and not so much on on Marl County. They're keeping a close eye. And Chair Sykes and I have been and other staff members have been participating in in intermittent E O C meetings with the emergency manager and sheriff to get updates on those. As of right now, we've only had one legacy structure that's been burned in either of those two fires. And no, no residences have been burned. We are looking at recovery, specifically just making resources available particularly to the to the people who have grazing lands up in that area. We know those cattlemen have been impacted by this. And so we are looking to see what we can do to get updates and resources to them. I know they've got a strong contingency as well, looking at those items. But the governor and governor staff force service and that has all been very responsive and working. We've also land use agreements for the O H B and the fairgrounds. They've stopped using those two two facilities and the O H B campground will be open this weekend. As well as Enson Wright, they'll be back open with no threat to those. And the land use agreements for the fairgrounds in the O H B has been taken care of. We're working on the billing now, be working with finance department and how to get that built out and taking care of the use and the impact on those areas. We still have the utilization of Lexington Airport that's still ongoing. And frankly, our our staff have been a great support to the to the to the different departments and agencies that are responding to the fires. And we're very thankful that we haven't been as impacted as other counties around this happen. So.
And you got all the emails that I ordered to you for the home address.
Yes. So thank you for calling us, James. Any questions from the commissioners?
Thanks, Matt. The question was open agenda. Does anyone have anything you want to add to agenda?
I don't.
Next up would be our consent agenda. If you want to pull it out there.
Chair, if I could request, we pull out item G on the consent agenda. There was a $2,400 charge for facilitating the the return of the A M R ambulances. This was included in that included in that invoice. We need to have that separated before we pay that. So we'd just like to pull that item off and put that on for the 21st.
Move it on the future, maybe.
Yes. So I'd like to pull I out for additional discussion.
Okay. Question about the sheriffs. Yeah, I don't have anything. I was looking at it. There's one of them say, one of the items say used instead of unused. Shouldn't they all be unused? I mean, they give you, give us credit. And I don't know if it makes a difference, but I just want to make sure it's.
Can't correct it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. The ones were made for the first. And this is make credit for that's used, you know, and say not used. Should that say not used or is there something?
Yeah, that's great. Should I be, you should say no.
Yes.
That should be great. So. I mean, it doesn't matter. So that's why they want to pull out it. It well, it doesn't matter.
It's a typo, I think.
Just a typo.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll leave that. Okay. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to put that agenda without I.
N G, N G.
N G. Okay.
So I make that okay.
You want me to second?
Second.
You want me to second that or further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. All opposed? Motion carried.
So on item I, I know that there is a written report. Do you have anything else to add to that, Matt? And so the actions to 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 provide an emergency pooling to the St. Patrick's senior apartment, I think, was a well meaning effort by emergency management and the sheriff. However, it wasn't cleared through the proper channels. And quite frankly, there's issues with with doing it the way they did. As we look at it, I mean, it's it's a positive, positive response, but it's not within the the it's not within the the regular processes of the county government. And while the issue was, was they put it on for the 17th. I was not notified of it when I saw that. I had it pulled because we didn't have an understanding of what what it was for. And they weren't able to attend. I talked with Steve right afterwards and said, hey, this is, this is an odd circumstance. Where was this approved? He's like, well, this is just for the hard wiring. And I told him, well, we need to look at if we can pull money for this and where we can pull money from. At that time, I believe I did tell him to proceed, that it would have to come out of his his accounts. When I met with Kevin and on that, Kevin's like, no, this is absolutely not correct. So it's part of my fault there for for doing that. I reached back out to Steve the next week as we got in on this saying, we can't expend it. Unfortunately, he'd already proceeded to approve the work and it had been done the same day that I told him, we can't do this. And so I don't recall if I gave a big thumbs up or just said, we've got to work on this. He he construed that as approval to proceed. And so so this is a swing and a miss on part on on both the emergency management and in the type of reaction there. And once the commitment was made for me to to give an implication that he should proceed. And again, that was a verbal discussion. I don't recall it. He firmly says you you gave approval. And I don't recall it good enough to say yes or no. Did say we need to discover where the money was from. Once we could have that, we should have waved it off much sooner. The amount of it, 2850. It's unfortunate. And we, I sat down and chatted with Steve and said, you know, we really need to determine emergencies. We can't just go out and help help people in the community willy nilly on things. Or, you know, we're going to get in trouble. First of all, the auditors are going to have a heyday with us on this. It's public monies which should be taken care of and approved by the V O C through the budgeting process or through the proper emergency procedures that are established in the purchasing process. And as such, we reviewed that, made sure that that's the way going forward. So unfortunately, we have this commitment by the county. The the goods have been provided. My only real justification is well meaning intent. And fortunately, a bit of misunderstanding on on my part and emergency managers. And we're asking for the Board of Commissioners' consideration. Appreciate Kevin's memo outlining the the particulars of what's required on these kinds of things. We will be reviewing that with all department heads to make sure we don't have those issues. And quite frankly, we're continuing to refine our procurement processes to make sure we're 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 following what the Board of Commissioners has approved and which keeps us in compliance with state and federal guidelines. So this is a bit of a misunderstanding, a misstep on 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 proper use. And we're hoping that the V O C will will consider it as as done in good faith with no maliciousness and that we've, we were, we are taking steps to make sure that this doesn't happen again in the future.
So I guess the comments I have on is that since it was benefiting basically to other organizations, I didn't, I guess I didn't understand why they were putting the bill forward.
Part of it is a part of it is because of the sophomore seniors matters. You know, they're on constrained budget. They're pretty tight. Jerry does a great job on making sure that his program does well. So they don't have a lot of money. This is a stopgap issue where the state emergency management group was able to provide the H V A C. And the St. Patrick's senior apartments unfortunately is not at full capacity now, which has impacted their budget. The cost of the replacement of the H V A C compressor is about $40,000. Once they get all said and done, and they've actually went out to other community partners, WIC bed being one of them. And WIC beds actually provided a grant to them in the amount of just under $19,000 to pay for half of that that cost. So they just didn't have the the reserves to do it. And for the for the for the temporary H V A C, it needed to be hardwired to for continued use. It's still the the actual H V A C still isn't in place. And so this was put in there as a stopgap. I do have concerns about it. It's not a, you know, it doesn't doesn't pull the whole building. It just pulls the the common areas where where the lunches are held for sophomore seniors. And it does give a respite for for that vulnerable population. But as can be seen, the seniors just switched over to the U L S launch and were able to go to another area and use that while the air conditioning was down. So it was a bit of a knee jerk reaction. And while I appreciate can do attitude from our emergency managers and and the approach, we need to have it done within proper guidelines when emergencies are hit that natural level, the the county merited emergency and not just individuals or business emergencies.
As I was saying, you know, just the number of 2850 bucks to put in a breaker and rinse some wire seems pretty kind, but it's pretty heavy duty wire. Unfortunately, it goes all the way through and around into that main panel. They had to make some adjustments to the panel and then. So that was going to be the next question. Was it fifty for life? They ran a heavy duty extension cord? And it's wired into the panel or is it actually in the walls? Because if it's a heavy duty extension cord, I mean, a 50 amp. I mean, that's basically what your dryer is off is a 40 or 50 amp breaker. But also if it is a like an S O four, like the heavy duty extension cord, what happens to that board at the end of it? Because this could be something that could be repurposed potentially through the road department and the shop, you know. I have a large extension cord runs my own, maybe the road department or parks department, you know. But the O H B part, when they're doing some of the different things up there, maybe this would be a cord that they should use to wire in something up there. Because, again, it's just a board. If we're paying for it, we should end up with a board that shouldn't be left behind with somebody else.
I can definitely, in fact, that was one of the questions that I haven't had a chance to ask about is when it's done, how it's decommissioned. You're right. It is, it's not in the walls. It is laying through the through the area and they have to put, you know, places so people don't trip over it. But it is, I mean, it's a it's a big heavy duty cord. Yes. And so.
So I'm just, to my point again, there could be potential uses for the county to use that cord again.
We can definitely make it so that it comes back to the county at the end of its end of its utilization. That's what I have.
The only comment I have is I think there, you know, I see the breakdown as in the process, you know, the way this happened. And I hope, I always like to look at this as a learning experience, you know. And I think we're going to have a, we're planning on having a post getting get together really.
After action report.
Yeah. Much too much. And I've heard FEMA has someone they can bring in and put on a program about responsibilities during a during a fire. And this might be addressed, this type of thing might be addressed at the same time. I thought Kevin's memo was excellent. And and I hope that that helps to the people here. Everybody reads that. But I think at the same time, you know, they're under the pressure that they were approved at the highest level, you know, to get this done. So do they have to go to Kevin directly? Or not? Those are things that I think need to be cleared up. Now, let me ask you a question. You you have staff.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have elected meetings?
Yes, we have elected meetings once a once a month while I have staff meetings.
Okay, because see, if you know, granted, you know, it wasn't like you put this in his house for his hot flavors.
Yes.
So, I mean, I do, and I appreciate my justice. We bought it and it's an overpriced. But is there a way to avoid this in the future? And how do we tell staff, because Steve is active staff, is elected, but he works for elected. So how do we impart that information? Who do they go to for clearance on a matter? Because it's not up, I don't think it's up to the neighborhood center. And determine whether or not the county should pay for something. It's up to us to say no.
Yes.
So how do we impart to staff when they get a request like this? What's the correct challenge to go through? You know, what is it? Does it need to be bid? Does it need to be going for commissioners? Where's the, what type of deal? Is that possible? Or is this just?
Oh.
Is that just one out that leave us going out there?
So this, this so any, any emergency purchases or anything like that that are unbudgeted should at least be brought to my attention. Anything that's not budgeted needs to come to me to be brought to you. Because anything that's not budgeted, that's not an emergency and a known emergency issue, and it's outlined in the procurement policy, I do have certain purchasing procurement administrative processes that I that I can exercise on that. But even when I do those, I'm supposed to notify you in writing after after the fact. This one was just odd because it really didn't qualify as an emergency. And that's one thing with even with the emergency manager reporting up to the sheriff, we still need to follow those procurement rules. And as it is, we kind of tripped. And I don't, I don't want to blame the fires, but that's kind of that caused issues with communications as well with with Steve and the sheriff both being up there. And, you know, with with there should have been some additional pushback on where this is before it got spent. And unfortunately, the inference that I approved it did go forward. And so this is this is a faux pas, both on emergency management. this is a, a faux pas, both on emergency management and myself. And not, and not closing that loop. So generally, any kind of emergency, uh, non-budgeted comes to me. If it qualifies as a true emergency, I can let it go and we can, uh, we'll notify you. Otherwise, any unbudgeted, uh, expenditure should come before this board, before any meeting is, uh, put out. So we're, so this request is almost retroactively say, yes, this is a, this is a grant that we're gonna give to a community organization, um, and allow us to, to dispense with that money.
So the way it's, what a good question. So in the description, it does say that it's hardwired.
It is hardwired.
What it says in the description, the hardwired isn't extension. Sorry.
No, that's not. You're right. It's, it's a, I mean, it's hardwired into the panel and into the machine. So it could be, so it's not, it doesn't have the receptability to. It is, it is outwired and that's the definition. Yes. So as far as reusing it, we would, if we were to reuse it, we'd have to either hardwire it wherever we need it or put some receptible, you know, adapters on there. Depending on what use we define.
The HVAC system, the mobile or temporary HVAC systems don't go away and go back to the state or whatever.
Yes. I don't want it to go with. Even before, even before your suggestion, yes.
Not much to say, it's the thing.
Yeah, maybe that would be. Hey, here's a cord for you next time. You need to use it and it's only twenty eight hundred dollars.
So.
So that was very good, Dave, you know, unfortunately. We chalk this up to it's a learning experience that we need to get processes, procedures in place. We'll have those moving boards. So with that, all for authorization. Are you seeing?
Steve, did you want to add anything? You've got, uh, staff, uh, touching the cable back.
I think it's clear. We will definitely get it back.
Oh, wait, we don't need it.
Okay.
All second.
Okay, we have a second then. Alter.
I, I.
Uh, our votes, question. Okay. Okay, next up is the first one aside, the, uh, six day. He's got the official order out of, out of Ohio. State Jordan. It's Mike on Zoom. Mike? He's with, uh, he's with the, uh, group. That is advocating for this.
Mike, if you could raise your hand. There might be a burger, right? All right.
Can you hear us, Mike?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Okay.
There you are.
And you can start your video as well if you'd like to, Mike.
Well, yeah, wait, wait a minute first before you start the video. I wanna, I wanna kind of set this up for the, for everybody. The, the reason that, uh, we're talking about this is the voters of moral county. Uh, I don't know how long, I don't know the details. I know it was a fairly large, wide margin. Instructing the county commission to hold these discussions. You know, that's, uh, it's mandated through the election process. And so with that, we invite you, and I think we have in the past. So, uh, if you want to go ahead and, and introduce yourself, uh, give a brief, uh, update on where you're at or what's going on, if you could do that. And then do your whatever presentation you have. That's all good.
That sounds great. I appreciate that. Uh, my name is Mike McCarter. I'm the president of Move Oregon's Border and Citizens for Greater Idaho. I live in Le Pine, Oregon. Uh, I would much rather be there in person and present this information to you because I enjoy the face to face relationship that we have. In, um, May of this year, Crook County passed a similar measure that is, uh, was passed in, in Moro County, um, by about fifty three percent. Uh, there was a lot of, of objection that came out of the Portland area trying to figure out why Portland was so interested or those folks over there were so interested in, in why that was, uh, happening in Crook County. But the, the unusual thing about this measure in Crook County is it was brought up by the people. It was not our measure that put it on the ballot. People went to the county commissioners and put it on there because they wanted to have the opportunity to vote. And it passed, and so that is thirteen counties, eastern, central Oregon that have voted and passed a measure. Now, didn't pass quite like, uh, Moro County, which passed by sixty percent. There seems to be a lot of, um, you know, unrest about the way that the Oregon leadership and legislature is treating eastern Oregon and people are starting to, to speak up about it. The, um, what we are doing now is that we are traveling throughout eastern Oregon and we'll have one set up here shortly, I believe, for Moro County with an update on what's going on with Move Oregon's Border because people are asking questions and it's really hard to get the information out. So we've got meetings set up, uh, first one in Jefferson County on the fourteenth of August. Harney County on the twenty first of August. Uh, Lala County on the twenty seventh of August. So we are traveling, the leadership of, of Oregon's body are traveling to these and, and opening up for questions and answers that are going on. Uh, your measure, measure twenty five eighty eight basically, uh, you know, says, uh, what, what can the county board of, excuse me, the Moro County Board of Commissioners do to discuss how to promote the interest of Moro County in any negotiation?
Can I, can I interrupt you for just a second? I don't have that in front of me, but I, I don't know if that's quite right. It didn't ask us what we could do. Didn't it just instruct us to hold the discussion on it?
No, I, I was just gonna explain that. And the way that, the way that it's written.
One of the, one of the confusion, Mike, is that people think that Moro County voted to secede for Oregon. And that with this vote, that's not the case.
No, it's not.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
You're absolutely. There, there are two of the thirteen counties have voted that particular point. Exactly like Wheeler County, Wheeler County, uh, the commissioners put her on the ballot there and, uh, um, fifty nine percent of the people voted to move Wheeler County to Idaho. So that was one of the few counties, there were two of them that, that put that ballot measure on exactly in that wording. Measure twenty five eighty eight for Moro County basically is, is, uh, promoting the interest of Moro County in any negotiations. We, you know, regarding the relocation of the Oregon, uh, Idaho state border. So, um, what we're asking is, is if we've got thirteen counties now in eastern Oregon where a, a measure has passed to begin negotiations or discussions or get the talk going. You would think that our state representatives would pick that up and, and start talking about it in Salem. About the issues, why are there, why is this problem going on? What's creating it? And things like that. But to date, you know, it's just been stone milled. They don't want to talk about it at all. Don't even care about it. Well, we're gonna continue on. This is, you know, again, uh, from the people up movement. This is not a, a, an organization like Citizens for Greater Idaho is all grassroots. It's not a corporation or a out of state interest or anything else. We want to get some discussions going in the state legislature about the way that they're treating eastern Oregon and more or less ignoring us in, in our, in our problems and requests. And I, you know, I, uh, I feel really bad about even talking about the particular issue right now when almost half the states on, in fire right now. And you, you folks have, have dealt with this. We've dealt with it around the Le Pine area in the Cascades above us and everything, and it's, uh, it's terrible, you know? And I'm not blaming anybody for it. It's, it's, uh, maybe that there is some things that can be done to improve it such it doesn't happen again. But, uh, we would ask you, the county commissioners, you know, when you go to your eastern Oregon, uh, county commissioners meetings to, to pass the message up the line to the legislators to start, start talking about. Doesn't have to be about moving the border. Start talking about the issues that, that are, are giving us the problems here where Oregon's leadership is, is, uh, driving hard on correcting what they think are the problems in western Oregon that have a negative effect on us in eastern Oregon. So, um, that's basically what I, I've got for you this morning. Any questions?
Any questions, Mike? It's all right. No, we're good.
Okay, I hope to see you guys soon or the, you know, the board and, uh, be over there for the next meeting, uh, where we can take and I can present this information in person. So thank you for the time. I know you've got a big docket going here and agenda, so, uh, I'll let you go. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, Eastern Oregon County's Association Payment Authorization, right? It's got my name on it and the reason why is I wanted this on. In the past, I've asked for this to be looked at also. I mean, I, I want to emphasize, I don't have anything against this organization. However, sometimes I, I would rather on these type of groups and stuff, it's not just put it in the consent agenda and pass it, but talk about what they do for us, you know? Do we need to, you know? I mean, myself, last year I went on their website and hadn't done it, helped it for two years. I was trying to find out. Yeah, this year I went on there and my website doesn't even, it just bombs out. It says I'm forbidden to get on there. Every one of their pages and every one of their links. So I know that they had a meeting the other day that, uh, Matt and I attended and also Kevin, I believe.
I was there as well.
You were there. Okay. And then they talked about, uh, reparations or mediation for, for fires. So I know they've done that, but, and you know, like I said, I'm not against it. I just, I just like to talk about, you know, what do they do for us? And, you know? So if nobody wants to talk about it, then we'll disintegrate the motion and pay it, I guess.
Well, I think.
It's all good.
I don't know that any of the three of us have done a lot with them, but I do think that they've talked about some of the issues like Mike McCarter is just not compatible with the issues, but found out. There are members there that are more active than, I think that they take that voice to AOC and also, you know, when they're talking with their legislators that represent their, that they're advocating on interests that benefit us generally too. And I have a problem with paying the. I personally get more out of the, uh, I personally get more out of the phone calls with Senator Finley and the whole eastern Oregon caucus. That we do monthly. And those are really informative. But I think he has, he has a lot to do with that. So, especially during legislative times, it's really informative and also, uh, worth the time. So that's, that, and that's, you know, that's the extent of what I do.
That was, that's what I, that's what I wanted to discuss, is what they're interacting with them. Just, I think that's just good practice.
And I think it's just.
And, uh, you know, is there anything that we would expect more from them that we might, you know, maybe I could email and say, yeah, we think, you know, we're paying this, but we take you guys my PDS or just suggestions.
Well, we give emails from stuff that they're working on and.
Yeah, no, and I'm thinking of, is there something that we would like to see?
Sure, sure. Uh, uh, and we can bring that up in those monthly calls, um, with Senator Lindon. Um, that I have in the past on some of those calls brought stuff up and they did get back to me.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, they did. Okay.
Yeah.
So they were, okay, good.
Paul's been, Paul's been pretty good.
Okay, then I'll entertain the motion to pay. Now, I guess there's three options here. I don't have that.
Basic, membership, uh, Blue Mountain Governor Metal Committee optional, Eastern Oregon Economic Science.
Now, we've gone with the economic song before, right, Matt? Is it not the one they have over, uh, in the ground and?
So that's different. That is put on the EBS.
Okay, so we go with the base?
Yeah, the twenty five hundred.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to pay the dues to, uh, Eastern Oregon County Association for twenty four hundred dollars. Okay, and I'll say.
We'll move to second then. Any further discussion? I'll favor.
All right.
All of those, most secure.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay.
Next up is the Clean Water Consortium proposal. That's me too. Um, how many people we have on Zoom? Like during our, uh, work session we had, I read this. I don't think I'm gonna read it, but, um, it's there for people to read. I'm assuming. Have you read the H R this?
Yes.
Okay. Then, then I'm just gonna, if anybody wants to, if anybody on Zoom that wants to know about it, it's in our packet for what we're talking about. So, why am I pushing this? Um, I feel the, number one, the, you know, nitrate problem in the Le Pine is a big one. I mean, it's big. You know? This, this kind of came around because of Wes Glenn and, you know, people follow the law and I understand that. But I, I wanted us to look beyond just Wes Glenn. Like I said, I want, I would like to, it's so much to do. There's so much money involved. I think it, it needs to transcend any, any staff that might change or move on, any electives that might move on, but you know, to get it done. So it's not something that's just like, okay, we're gonna do this. Then, you know, then what do we do? You know, certain people want to, you know, that's what I'm trying to do with this. And I don't, and the second part is I, I, I don't think it should be more counties, uh, total fold. Uh, I don't think that at some point electives or anybody should be, you know, going into Moro County's, uh, you know, capital improvement funds, you know? To, to, uh, fund this, you know, that's just my thought, you know? And I think there's enough interest out there in this, federal, state and local level to, but this should be taken fair. Jeff and I are on the broadband and I don't, uh, for consortium, I don't like to exactly compare them because they are different. People told me they're different. I know they're different. Because lots of ways they're different, but they also, the thing I like about the broadband is two years, I think that's when we started, a couple of years ago. We're actually in the process now of getting ready. We put in for a three and a half million dollar grant. And if that grant is approved, we're actually, we have a project to go. To me, I like that. I think that's the piece missing in what we have now. We have studies, we have GSI doing a great job out there. Uh, what, what happens to, what, what happens to GSI's work? That they're, as they move forward or what they're done. You know, that hasn't been defined to be in a way it should. Because I'm gonna call it, we've been, I've been trying to, you know, use, you know, pipe in the ground.
Okay, so we're paying GSI to do something and we don't have an end game for that product. And this could be our, so that makes sense.
This is the end game. And I thought, well, Moro has fifteen years infrastructure experience. I mean, that's, that's what they do for fifty years. So that's one of the reasons I want them involved is their knowledge. And also it's a county wire. I just think that, that it should not be just us. So that's why I, I propose, um, I'm, I'm trying, I, I would like to see the IGA um, written up in such a way that this group is not, is, it just, just focuses, it's, it just focuses on construction, pipe in the ground. You know, don't, don't start getting mission crazy, you know, where all of a sudden you're, you know, doing this, doing that. No, because we really need to keep a, to me, need to keep, keep the sharp eye. And so I put the goal to the consortium, collect money and identify plans for clean water systems and water capital improvement project in the Le Pine. That's my thought. Very focused.
So does that open us up to Unit Hill County though? Well, it's a little bit more in Morrow County. So maybe we should reface that as the Morrow County Leuma area.
Good idea.
Just so, I mean, I want to keep it clear because the next thing you know, they're going to say, well, we got a project in Morrow, and you've told the county that, you know, your consortium can help us with. I think we need to keep this.
Excellent.
That that was one of the things that we discussed with the board. This is concentrating on Morrow County and let Unit Hill figure out their own, but we have specific resources that are specifically looking at solutions within Morrow County. Um, and then I guess I would add to that, that we have other water issues besides nitrates within Morrow County. So is this going to be strictly about nitrates or about water?
That's what I wanted to ask you to, you know, I know that was. I know.
Yeah, we have other, you know, we have, we have the Willa Creek.
I know. What I'm wondering is, do you open this up to, well, let's start taking public comment on what else could be done?
Right. No, I understand that, but I also want to have it defined so we can do whatever we need to do.
Okay.
Or or do you have a, or do you have a subcommittee for that? Right? You can use the consortium and then have
Yeah.
a subcommittee for a different process.
Okay, case in point is, um, I invited Commissioner Drago to attend the meeting um, next week, um, with Kit, uh, Chris about um, a uh, offer for recharge um, project they have for the Willa Creek area. And I guess they've been working on it for years and they've they're at the point where it's ready to, ready to move forward. So it's some exciting, so. Um, so it would be important to discern in this document.
Precisely why I brought it up here is that I I could see us doing that as a subcommittee to the consortium.
Then maybe we ought to describe the form of their projects.
I I don't disagree with that, right? I mean, because it's not, I don't think we should, yeah, be afraid to do, combine just to run along.
Well, I think that's a, that's a great idea. I just don't want to get out into the area all of a sudden. You know, we're, you know what I mean?
No, I understand.
Sometimes people, they lose focus when it comes time to actually do the project assembly, you know? Anyway. So, you know, okay, so that's the kind of thing I want to input on and, you know, I, here's how, okay, if the thing gets set up, here's how I see, trying to see it operating. You guys can tell me if you agree or you think it's, you know, if you write the, write the I G A and so forth, this way I see it operating this. And I'm going to use GSI, even though other, other examples you draw up are of that will, so I'll just use the GSI. Uh, I could say, yeah, you know, an engineer, but okay, GSI is, I've gone through their their scope of work certain time, what we're doing. They're, they're, they're going, they're going to get the projects to the point. I think Tamra's on board here, but.
And she's in a conference today.
So anyway, and if anybody bad or anybody else disagrees with what I'm saying, or you don't think so wrong, please tell me. Um, so GSI had the scope of work, it is going to bring these projects on individually, they're going to look at individual projects. Because there's different solutions all across the county, as you said. Over here, deeper well, over here, maybe group wells, over here, public water systems. And they're going to look at each one of those from a practical basis. The way I asked them when they were in our meetings, I said, now, are you going to tag a dollar figure estimate on these? Yes. I said, and it's going to be, um, it's not going to be pie in the sky where, no, we just, you know, get watered everybody and that was all about them, you know, it's only because two billion dollars, you know, they said, no, it's going to be practical. So then in our meeting with the board, and we didn't mention that Matt and I met with the members of the staff and elected a report uh, one minute uh, it was late for yesterday to discuss this. Because and our request to them was, will you put us on the agenda? To ask for the report, but we wanted to kind of act about prep. And one of the things I heard from an engineer there is Tamra and Matt and anybody else, maybe Kevin, everybody there has applied for grants and all the people for it. See, they know these things. I don't. That's why we want to put together this brain trust in Morrow County that knows this. Show people Morrow County can take care of our problems. Give us some money, we'll take care of it. So we got to show people that instead of, you know, just kind of moving along. Anyway. Uh, you know, back to, once the projects are, have a, a, a estimate attached to them and a general engineering outline, that's when you're going to go for the grants. Am I correct, Matt? You think?
Yes, I would definitely. You need to have an outline and least of feasibility.
But not deep and, okay, so that's what I envision being cast to the consortium. And th- those projects and then the consortium can take those. And we have, we're trying to get stocked up with people who understand grant knowledge, you know, our grant writer, Jutama. Uh, you know, Matt has experience, the board has, they, they've gotten, you know, the bots in destruction grants. Put those together, take that and get going on this thing, you know? And I've suggested when you look at the structure, it's a board be made up of. I want, my idea is to keep it slim, you know, and so it can operate, you know? It can move quickly when it has to. Four, four members, one staff, one, one elected from each from each principle. The reason I have the scaffold on there, see, it added it in the I G A, that's in a way they have the knowledge, you know, I mean, I could, you could sit there and 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 they kind of keep the elected's feet on it. I'm not there, we don't, you know, I mean, we're very practical this and the board too, but you see what I'm saying about, you know, they're going to, hey, that's not going to work or, hey, guys, you need to do this because we build, you know, twenty infrastructure projects. See, the port of moral, that's a better baby, you know? So how about going this way? Our, we're going to, as you say down here, so what are we going to bring to the table? We bring knowledge and, uh, you know, staff or grant writing. Uh, we bring administration, talk to Matt, he's on board with this. You know, I'm going to be the boss of the group there, you know, there's going to be a board chair of those. And give him pretty high, uh, pretty high administrative power there. And we also bring Kevin's abilities in the finance part, which is super important. Those should start at a different platform to federal state, well, he can probably tell us all the, you know, rules, 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 you know, he said, I don't care. And then you throw in, you throw in, you know, and I, and I were their private business that can give them the data.
Boss is a project that they can do.
Exactly, exactly. This is, this is the beauty of this, if it works the way we want it. When, when this group gets it, it's going to be a GSI, embedded, lay down, post better estimated project. Then you can take, and take that to maybe, uh, Debbie Riebe doesn't do it, right? I don't know, at one time they answered it. Maybe you, maybe the irrigators want to keep it. E W S gave half a billion to the project, so you will have something there. I think those type of I think all people who are, you know, government and private, they like to see a project with a plan and post a swing attached to it. It's an effort for them to, so we would have that. I can see some success there. And and beyond, you know, and moving beyond, uh, West Wind, you know? So, you know, the, the group that have these, you know, maybe they have four projects. But West Wind's a personal because there seems to be consensus with everybody want to do that. You know, they need it. It should go, probably go a water system, you know? So that seems to be, you know, we're, you know, the first, the first one, and then we all, tomorrow we're working on that. It's we're all very much difficult, that's the news. But that's okay. Like I said, you know, I mean, we're, we want to put a lot of smart people and they won't count it on this, so if anybody could this group should be everything. And so that's kind of what I want to do. What I'd like to see happen, you know, and just puts a puts a structure in place, gives us some direction, gives us some time to work for our money. Uh, you know, ability to go out and pull the brands, you know? Um, it's, it's a lot of, you know, definite direction to where we're going. But, so. Thank you for your thoughts on this.
No, it sounds fine.
And then, but, oh.
I, I just looked at the budget.
I listed from Jeff, it's from the broadband.
Yeah.
Because I have no idea. You know, I mean, I, I, I know that, you know, broadband put that together as far as, you know, you can look at legal, you can look at publishing, you can look at, you know, this type of thing. We are going to be, we're trying to run as lean as we can too, you know, like we're going to have the minister is going to be, uh, arms. Uh, Kevin is going to be, uh, our, and and I can, I can envision a a written agreement through the county and consortium, a written agreement on that job description. So you, you treat it as a separate entity. But we're, we're contributing what we do best. And this is what we do best, you know? And the board will be there contributing what they do best, which is, which includes, uh, uh, case by case basis possible, uh, in time.
In time back.
Yeah, which they know. And we brought it up at the meeting, you know, because I've done it all with the county. And I didn't want to try and tie in what even, you know, contribute to ten percent or anything like that, but they're in a good place. You know, we know. And Matt would sit down with their engineer, whoever, you know, and say, okay, here's, here's, here's the project, here's what it's going to take, what, what can you guys put in on this? You know, how can it help us with our managing this? Maybe we can use what we're putting in, our administrative, uh, you know, or our financial stuff. Can we use that as a manager? See, I see, I see a way, you know, to run this lane on, uh, you know, on grant. That's what I want to do. Outside of that's
Let's see.
Let's just see sixty grand of these.
That's, so that's, that is a toll. One, it's not one twenty per each, it's one point toll.
No, and that's, I said, that has carried the right back, like, because I'm on it. And so, you know, you know, it goes off in a different direction. You know, we need to, we need to know about that. Each principle will have to protect it, you know?
This is something we would budget next year and start the consortium.
You know.
Because I don't see a project coming into.
Well, I asked, I asked, well, yeah, they're getting it set up. I asked Kevin if the money would be available. He said, yeah.
Yeah, I could give a tentative, yes, um, ninety percent or I need to chat with Matt about a couple of things to be hundred percent, but um, depending on you know, if the board wanted to do that and the board, uh, this fiscal year and we could accommodate it.
Yeah, okay, so if you want to, we'd be going for the for children's budget, yeah, just pretty pro way. If not, you know, and if he has to do something, if he has to get some medical advice outside, you know, you know, we're hardly going to say for some reason you didn't submit to the twenty twenty. Although some of it, you know, we're, we're offering grades, you know, even the financial team, so we're all, we're all, we're all. We're, we're, we're doing our best. So online, I guess, I might have wrote, should have wrote that up too. Asked a little bit different. It doesn't specifically stay. It's a motion to instruct child sites and nature. That Johnson, this is what I like you guys to consider. Return the August fifteenth quarter more may seek tentative approval of the water consortium council. If approved by court, instruct county council, council legal council, council of sites and Johnson to create I G A for important county for presentation and approval. Uh, our August beat, uh, twenty one. And then, uh, an important assignment this week is but it doesn't, it doesn't explicitly say in there that you're, uh, on board with it, you know? But I guess if you say, well, I I supply, but maybe legal counsel tells and I think they add a little more, a little shark comes on it and you gotta take about.
On this at this point, we're just getting, there's a motion to instruct.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not. Because the board is not committed to that, yeah.
No, I can never, we don't need this in there, but I wanted to, I wanted to talk to them before we have this meeting, so we'll surprise the unions. And then, you know, it's, it's in our package and they will see it. I'm very tired and get a look at it. But if we, if they don't approve on a fifteen, then that's story.
Right, and then part two of that, if approved, um, are we gonna, are we okay? I guess that's what you asked me, Brad. Are we, is that time I'm going to work? By the twenty first, yeah, I mean, that's pushing it, that's going to be six days. With two of those being a Saturday. Well, um, I, my concern is, is are we going to be able to have this nailed down by the twenty first, or do we want to maybe put it out in the board?
Yeah, that might be a little aggressive. I mean, particularly going back and forth and
Yeah.
uh, the, the board had thrown out an idea of having uh, possibly representative consignment organ and Etna and dealing with Leuma. So that might add even more attorneys to look at it. So how about just now? I'll make the motion to have Dave and Matt represent the August fifteenth quarter more meeting and get their interest and form in this consortium. I'll second that.
Second one, a little discussion. All ready?
I, I.
We should do it.
And we'll, we'll, I mean, I appreciate Dave's urgency on this matter, and so we'll work on it to try to see if we can get it, and whether it's the twenty first or that first meeting in September. Uh, we don't want to dawdle on.
I asked for the bar and so I promote.
Okay. As long as we don't hit a campfire, you know?
No, and, uh, again, I do appreciate the board of commissioners' willingness to explore this. Um, I mean, a year ago when we were hired, it's like, we don't want to take ownership. We still don't want to take ownership. But the county is a key, the key principle to enact change. And so far, we haven't seen the state or the federal or any other entity step up. It's always been studies. And I do appreciate the commission's willingness to explore a, a, a vehicle for action, because that's what we're leading it. Yes.
One of the reasons that I was pushing urgency is I've been hearing things and maybe I'm wrong, maybe only I'm wrong is the state is getting, uh, a little bit anxious and cranky about, we want to see things happen. And they're, they're getting approached for funding from other groups or something, I don't know. And we want, maybe we can get out ahead of this as soon as we can, so you're done. With, at least with the plan and say, hey, don't don't give away those, you know, those, uh, fine monies, you know, the, the port finances, I don't know. It's not a great take, take a break on this deal, but it's, you know, like it's not, that makes logic sense. Go right back into the strike rather than you go to a I don't, not any other group, but get up, you see, if you, you get something going, you know, show the state, maybe here's what we're doing.
Yeah, we are.
Don't, you know, give us a chance, get it together before you hear anything drastic. Us. I have one more question on, um, oh, uh, and I guess when we talk, it's like I've been, I've been trying to figure out the, read up on the difference between a consortium and just a regular, I mean, like, uh, grants was just regular activity and the, uh, broadband is sort of a little different. So at some point, I and even though we haven't got approval from the D O C, one of the reasons I was hoping that you were eager to listen to this is or not to listen to the board.
Yes.
You know, just keep the wheels turning. What, like, about, how are we going to, I don't know, so spend a bunch of time right now, wait till you start putting something together, but, uh, that was one question.
Yeah, well, I can, I mean, I can think of that, I think that.
But the one thing I would comment to you very well in this meeting is a clear picture of what we want that I M T A for this consortium to accomplish. What probably, what, what, what's it supposed to do with this?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I've got kind of a broad from this prior um, meetings, I think I have kind of brought it with you, I can attend the, the quarter more meeting. Um, you know, whether it be by online or in person, we're going to get their thoughts as well. Uh, triangle of those, the order draft.
I would recommend in person because online, it's very difficult to understand so much. Their, their system is not very friendly to them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, expected to succeed, I S I, I'll say, certainly I S I, Trump, but. Copy.
You'll notice in the packet, it's pretty much blank, um, agenda sheet.
Is that one we scratched?
What's that?
No. Okay.
So, um. I was very hopeful to have a contract before you today, and we are very close, uh, we've been meeting with the health district. Um, as, as you may have heard, um. Uh, from their last board meeting, they made changes, uh, to the IGA pulling out the, uh, the cities from consideration on. So the IGA will only be between the county and the health district. And so, um, we've, we've massaging some language on that, necessity for that. As well as we have submitted the, uh, draft contract for the northeast and southern ASAs to them. Uh, they're reviewing that, uh, we have a meeting scheduled for Friday at four, uh, PM. And, uh, all parties are included and including their attorney, so we're really hoping that we're. We're seeing the light at the end of the table, uh, at all, to get this contract taken care of. Um, so we're, we're nearing that, it won't hold my breath. But we are getting close to that, uh, point. One of the things we're just, uh. Taking care of as well as just making sure coverage for the, for the interim coverage is, uh. With the fair and such, they're stationed down at the fairgrounds and making sure that they, uh, they don't get, uh, impeded by the. By the rodeo and the, and the fairgrounds activities there, and whether we need to, uh, entertain an alternate location for them for just a little bit. I was hoping to get everything transitioned over before then, um, but that's not, likely not going to happen. Um, with, if we have success and have, have some final consideration, uh, on Friday. Um, I may ask for the board to meet, uh, for a short special session next Wednesday. To consider, uh, you know, accepting an agreement and getting those assigned out, so we don't have to wait another week for. To get the South taken care of and, and get them rolling, so, um, very close. Hoping to have some good news after this meeting on Friday, and hopefully we can get that awarded and move forward.
Another question, so on the IGA, what, what is the purpose of the IGA and how common is that? With. Analyst providers and counties, I mean, I don't, I don't see, I've looked at it a little bit, and I'll see where an IGA is a common thing between. Analyst providers, do we have an IGA with Portland Fire for the North?
No.
Yeah.
And part of it is. Part of it is to settle the political waters that have been between the, the health district and, and the county, or the perceived disruptions there. Um, part of it, you know, there is, there is the, uh. The language in the IGA says that the county will not take an active participation, any, 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 uh, efforts to, uh, de-annex, oh, uh.
We.
So.
Property from the. So on that. Quickly.
Yes.
We are obliged to do that, we have to do that, if they come to us, we have, we have to be that body.
Yes, and so.
So by signing the IGA, my concern, so I just wanna get this out, my concern is that that's gonna tie our hands. And, and we can't say we can't hear this.
Well.
We are obliged.
So that, that's part of the final language that we're working on. Uh, that Bob has, has pointed out saying, you know, there, there's, uh, specific obligations that we have. Uh, per ORS that says if a petition comes to us, we have to hear it. Um, and so.
And we have to make a decision, then my concern is the IGA is gonna make that. Right?
That's part of the, that's part of the continuing discussions, we wanna make sure that, uh, there is, I mean, we're awarding the essay. Uh, in that, in that instance, this is a, uh, vote of confidence and saying you're providing services and we want you to continue providing services. Uh, they would like to have something in writing, formalized, saying, we support that, separate from the essay. So, um, it's a little bit redundant, and we wanna make sure that the, uh, that the statutory requirements that the county has in. In case any petitions come through are not, are not tied, because that would be unconstitutional. Uh, but we wanna make sure that, uh, that they, uh, you know, like I said. Their efforts to settle the waters, and we wanna make sure that, that we aren't hamstrung in doing that as well. And so we're finalizing that, we've offered some changes in language to do that. Uh, that's one reason why their attorney is on for this Friday, I'm sure, is to just. It, to finalize and hammer that out. There's a couple other options that we've looked at, Bob says a, a resolution in, uh, in support, uh, you know, they're continuing their charter. Uh, requirements of being a, a health district, um, and we're hoping to, to get that finalized this week. So.
Yeah, I think all of us, the email after our last meeting. Marygan and Kimberly Leung gave her report, she sent out an email in the afternoon, that someone advised her to read what had been posted as the IGA. Her question was, how would this affect the relationship between the county and the community council institutions? And I replied back to her and said, you know, we're. Have you working on it to, um, make it so that basically. Not a exclusive territory if we're to run provider services.
Yes. And, yeah, the, uh, the health district did reach out to Aaron Palmquist and, uh, to CCS, uh, about those concerns. And they offered actually language to make sure there is no exclusivity on the agreement, that this doesn't preclude that. The county from public, from contracting and working with other people to provide, uh, health and, uh, mental services. Uh, wouldn't preclude us from, uh, you know, coordinating and assisting with, with other providers coming into the area. Uh, so it's, uh, so there has been some give and take on, on the language of that. Uh, that initial one was pretty hard, and we mentioned that was draft language, and we were looking for feedback from the cities. Uh, I appreciate that the health district pretty much heard the, the, uh, the concerns of the city. And we're hoping that the, uh, the final concerns of the county can also be resolved as we continue to discuss with them.
So I have a bunch of the same concerns that you're gonna bring up.
Yeah. And we're very cognizant of those, and, uh, will be, uh, we are in process of addressing, sorry I didn't provide a draft, uh. Uh, the latest draft, yeah, as part of this packet.
We're having a process now. All right.
Thanks.
Okay, we've got the considerations to apply grounds on change X grant, we're improving.
So, um, this is a request for, uh, VOC to authorize myself to apply for a grant. It's just a practice that I'd like to get into as we, as we look at the grants, this is a smaller grant, an amount of ten thousand dollars. Uh, typically, you know, I have the authority to apply for grants, but since it's not budgeted, I need to bring it before you. Uh, before we spend the money, but I just wanted to get the approval, bookable. Um, Change X, uh, Grant, uh, the in communities Eastern Oregon, they actually have a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that they've allotted for communities within. The Umatilla and Marl County areas, um, they wanna help provide, uh. Items that will provide economic, uh, and community development, as well as to engender, uh, uh, current. Uh, traditions and other activities. One of the, uh, recipients of this was the care center up on the hill, they got a portion of their roof replacement, uh, through this grant. And as we're looking at this, uh, I've been looking at the fair and how it operates, and some of the equipment is antiquated. Um, our, our arena groomer that is owned by the county is very old and not, it's kinda cobbled together. Uh, the rodeo group, uh, purchased their own, which is a Black Widow piece of equipment, uh, but they, uh. The way it operates, they only use it for the outdoor arena, and our indoor arena is not, not used, and quite frankly, Black Widow is a fine piece of equipment. But ABI is pretty much the industry standard. Uh, what we'd like to do is approach, uh, Amazon and Change X to kind of, uh, through this grant, to allow us to purchase a. Uh, a new arena groomer, which, uh, can get down deeper than the Black Widow, churn it up, and, uh, help. Help make it so that we can do the outdoor and the indoor arena, and hopefully bring in more use for the, uh, for the arenas that we have. And get more events going on in that area, so, um. Uh, what, what we're looking for is the active, or the Change X grant has an application due date of August fifteenth. We'd like to apply for, um, for about nine thousand dollars, uh, they can award up to ten thousand dollars. Uh, we're not looking for a match by the county, um, and to see if we can get funding through this grant to buy this piece of equipment. If we don't get this grant, we will be looking at possibly including it into the budget, uh, process next year. Um, I wanted to look at this grant because the fairgrounds, uh, has its own source of revenues, while we do subsidize it with general funds. I, uh, I think this is a unique experience where we can, uh, and situation where we can, uh. Go to Amazon and Change X and, and say, hey, this is for community billing and, uh. You know, some of the rural traditions that we enjoy here in Marl County, and we'd enjoy your sponsorship of it through this grant. So with that, we'd ask, uh, ask if, uh, and of course through the grant, and even with the amount, we'd be looking at some other. Uh, other items to get bids, the nine thousand would definitely cover the cost of the ABI TR three, which is a really cool piece of equipment. And, uh, we've actually borrowed one from Permostin, uh, they have one, uh. That, uh, we brought over and we're gonna have them take a look at it and run it around the arena a bit, and make sure it's, it's something that's, that's good for. Uh, for our utilization before we, uh, before we finally pull the trigger on this, but we'd ask the VOC for authorization for me to apply. And, yeah, for this grant. I'd make the motion to authorize, I'm sure, Jensen to apply for the Change X grant.
I'll say.
We're starting the discussion, all favor?
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
Right. So to, uh. After we've, the weed department is. A building and, I don't know, Logan Lane.
Yeah, it's kind of on the main highway, but it's on Logan Lane is the address there, um.
Logan Lane, uh, Logan Lane is out by, uh, Valley.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the addresses that they, uh, they have on it, so, um. I can double check on that, but that's the address they have for the, for the area, it's right there across from the, uh.
Well, you got two on here, but, uh. The, the motion says Logan Lane, but the lease says, uh, Lindenway.
Oh. How do you get Logan? Because the email that I got sent, maybe that's, um. My apologies. I don't know how I transpose those two.
Yeah.
So, if it's okay, uh, to amend the motion and the discussion to Lindenway, rather than, uh, Logan Lane. Um, this is, as we discussed on the, uh, the last meeting in, in July, the regular meeting. This is for, uh, the lease of a two bay, uh, garage with office space, uh, for the weeds department. Uh, the lease will be for fifteen hundred dollars per month, uh, with an initial five hundred dollar payment for the, uh, fiber connection. There will be additional utilities, uh, that, that are encompassed on this. And will require a supplemental budget change for, uh, this, as it was not a original, uh, budgeted item. Uh, we are looking to have a supplemental budget request taken care of in the next meeting or two, uh, before the VOC. Uh, but this would allow us to, uh, to store the weed equipment, which currently is not in a environmentally controlled area. Which during the spring and fall months means that every time we go out and spray, we have to bring it in and, uh, more or less weatherize it, winterize it. Um, just to keep the chemicals from not binding up and, and going for naught. Um, so we'd ask, uh, if the commission would be all right to adjust the motion to Lindenway instead of Logan Lane. Uh, we'd ask for, uh, approval of the, of the lease of the property for the weeds department.
And one says about, from this?
Yeah, one, one last comment, um, just to be cognizant, we did have general counsel review this lease. There is requirement about any kind of environmental impact, we'd have to clean up. Since we are storing weeds chemical, it is, would be upon the, uh, and when we vacate the lease, make sure that. Those weeds chemicals haven't impacted the use of the space, this would be on, uh, the responsibility for our weeds department to properly store and. And mitigate any issues with, uh, with those chemicals. So that was the one item that, that legal counsel brought up as far as the lease. Uh, understandable, uh, I think, uh, uh, requirement for the lease, they don't want. Us to leaving around pollutants that would impact the use of their space, so.
So they just haven't had any containment for that, that chemical.
One of the things with the chemicals, they should have a, you know. Closet and everything that should contain those items, there is space within that building that Cory's pretty much got. Uh, you know, marked out to, to create that space and have secondary containment, make sure it's, it doesn't spread out. So that's, that's one of the, one of the few concerns that, uh. Will be only concern that was brought up once on review of the lease.
I don't know, there's no question, this is, there's no restrictions inside the city, that must be doing a southern America.
Yeah.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the lease, uh.
Thirteenth, Lindenway.
People team, I was looking for that now. They're more. Authorized account, I'm gonna say, the some necessary documents.
So. Second.
We'll do the second, we'll do the discussion. All favor?
I.
I'm, I should go.
Might follow you some. With the address, I'm not made.
Power, yeah. But my mind's in my mind, let's see. Maybe that's before you wanted to be. That's what I'm going, uh, okay, okay. Uh, uh, next up is G, intergovernmental, you're the part of transportation. With all the interchange area management plan, which are road and state for intersection area. And Daisy, is Daisy, are you there?
Daisy, you're landing, we're gonna jump on, if, if either of you are available, do you raise your hand, well. Hey, there's Daisy.
It's all yours, Daisy, tell us what it's about.
Perfect, thank you so much, uh, commissioners, um, this is an intergovernmental, uh, intergovernmental agreement we've been waiting on for a while from ODOT. Um, this is for the, um, IAMS, the interchange area management plan for the I eighty four Tower Road Interchange. Um, we have, I, I believe, four IAMS right now that we've done in the past, uh, and it's been a while. Uh, I think since like twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, since we've done one, um, but it's pretty standard, Greg, um, reviewed the contract, um. And I can answer any questions that you guys have, it's, um. A pretty standard contract, it also has, um, a caveat in their provision for. Uh, techni- technical advisory committee and public advisory committee, the, the TAC and the PAC, so that'll be. Um, on a future agenda to appoint members to, um. Uh, provide guidance on the, um, the P I C and the T I C, um. But this is a pretty straightforward and, um, routine process, um, the signature page is on page eight for, um. That, and I'm available to answer any questions that you have about the contract.
So in the proximity of this, um, there is a city property, is the city also have the IGA, are you aware of? Or is this just strictly within the county and the state?
Um, so the transportation system, um, is. Uh, under the jurisdiction of the county and the state, and so we'll, um, coordinate with. Um, city staff and involve them in the, um, technical advisory committee process, um, and they have been engaged in the conversation around this, I know there's been. Um. Some back and forth about the responsibility for planning for that intersection, um, but we will, um. Have them on the consultant team, but as far as the jurisdictional authority to plan for that interchange, um, it's, it is a county and, uh, ODOT, IGA.
Okay, and that's, and that's my concern, I just, we get too many, I'm offended, but you get too many planners together and we come up with some.
Yeah.
Concern.
Yeah, and that, that's the thing, um.
You left a couple excluded.
Yeah, the IGA is for the people who have authority of the adjacent roads. Uh, they're impacted by it, since the city owns property, but not the road, they'll be a stakeholder, but they won't be, uh, uh, direct for to spend the IGA.
Okay, that's, thank you.
If pointer goes, never, never reach a level that the attorney took off. You're going to smile a little bit. Never heard an attorney joke, that'd be great. Okay.
So I'll move to approve the intergovernmental agreement for Marl County, more than part of transportation, for the Tower Road Interchange. I'll say.
We moved in second and, for the previous discussion. All in favor?
Bye.
All right. Motion carried, thank you, Daisy.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah. Okay, that concludes our. Okay, that concludes our conference, now we're gonna move on to our department reports. Uh I think Mike. I think he's he's not aligning, no, I was saying, probably just sort of, yeah, right, right?
No, he didn't, he's gonna sign one before he went on vacation, but.
Oh, it's on vacation.
Yeah.
Probably down at the Astoria Fishing for a sound. Now they're starting to run.
That's good, we should have known in the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll move on, uh Eric.
Good morning.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're ready for it.
Thank you, I was saying, there's a lot been going on with the airport and solid things, so I wanted to to bring her. But she's been doing most of the late work.
Well, um. Thank you, firemen, Marl County Public Works. Um yeah, the airport, Matt kind of touched base on it, that all these areas were having. Firefighters and everybody come in and the airport was kind of. It was fun for me because it's never happened before when we had aerosol coming in and being invaded and. It was pretty cool, and it was nice visiting with everybody, they came in, um wasn't like the twenty sixth or something like that of. Well, it might have been the twenty fourth of July and they moved out August second, and they're just finalized getting everything moved out and all their. They have like a a command center trailer brought in there, so it was a good deal, so. That's done and that um gives the airport a little bit of revenue for the day, each day they paid something. So that that's a good plus, um I'm finalizing some. Uh specifications to finish up that business organ grant you had mentioned before you wanted to get that finished up. I'm wanting those fifty by fifty pads to put in front of the containers. So long for the drone activities, so I'm getting specifications on that so I can get a contract for the tenant. Go from there, I just can't say, or some pads, I gotta have something to give them. But um that's it for the airport, we're just. Getting ready for the C I P and the business items, you should have seen the C I P data. That they kind of do a planning at the beginning um of each every five years, they kind of do a planning on what they want to do, so. That's all that's talking about is they want to spend that money and we want to take it.
I have a question on the airport, I've been meaning to ask you, uh with all these helicopters, do they operate on out gas or they bring in their own? Oh, go.
Yeah, they only have hundred low net up there, so.
Okay.
I don't, they can't use that.
They use the J A.
Yeah. Shooter guy, I don't know if he comes anymore for the county, the guy who shoots Kyle, he is. But not these guys, no, that tanker, that um.
I'm not sure we could have supported them, um. Ran you drive pretty good. They had two semis going back.
Yeah, yeah, and it was constant, going back and forth, so it was, it was pretty cool.
We made, we made money off the water at the O H V. Five cents a gallon.
Yeah, yeah, and I think if depending on the size of the encampment, they make a certain amount of money.
Yes.
So it depends on how many people came in and stuff, so it's. Not a good thing to have these flyers, but it does help to open up.
It's nicely positioned.
It is, it is, and what a lot of the. Head guys from the state forestry said, if they only knew that our airport was this accessible and easy, that they'll do it more often. Let's hope nothing happens, but deep down inside, I'm just, come on, we'll do it.
I wanted to add that the command teams were great to work with, my my concern that I brought was, you know. We're over a little town, we're we're not used to the noise.
Yeah.
I was so impressed, they they said what they would do, you know, they they take off the land, the smaller ones, the tight ones, they. Uh fueled every two hours, uh bigger ones every four hours, they didn't fly anywhere than they needed to and they looped around town all the time.
Yeah.
And of course, I live in the middle of town, was able to witness that, they just, they took really good care of town.
Yeah, and I think.
No complaints.
Well, yeah, early on, I had a few phone calls, they weren't quite clear what was going on, and I apologized, but said this is what we need to do to. To help these people and help help this area out, and so.
They all understood that, and it was.
It's fine, and then everybody was getting on with it, oh, this is so cool, and so they were so open to let people come up there and they got to tour the. Helicopters going inside and wouldn't let you fly them, but.
They agreed not to fly after sunset, which I just said that can be an issue.
It it can.
Take care of it, it was a good experience.
Yeah, it was, it was exciting.
Any other questions on airport? Okay, um in with weeds, there there is, I say there's nothing of significance to report, that's not true. But I try to let um Cory um give his report, so I don't really want to step on him, but there is a lot going on. Um uh with wind energy and solar energy mitigation plan, you guys have heard it, he will report on that. Uh Kevin's been working really hard uh with him and so has has Matt, um I just want him to be able to report, but if you have any questions today. We can try and answer those, yeah, go ahead.
You know, I met with Brian. Um we kind of hammered on it. But we've been, but at some point, there was, there was gonna be some jot on the back of uh figures from you guys. He was using questions several times, he's he's gonna send the limit of the ladder, that's that's why, but I haven't seen those.
Operating costs.
Yeah.
Okay.
And uh, you know. Actually, we started, we started figuring out the table and and I came back with the counter offer, and we said, that sounds good, so. But he's like, I I gotta get this up to my superior, so they'll leave that part of the project, so I was hoping we could give that.
You will have it, you'll have it this week, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
We can get that to you.
They truly is.
Linden.
Yeah.
Anything else to add to that at all?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll do that, um solid waste, same.
Um I've been actively working on during the budget hearings, I got approved for two scales of each site. Um ac- actively working on specifications and um what I'm wanting, what I'm needing. And I'm just rebidding it out and putting that out another invitation to bid, just to give a little more clarification, I. Threw out the other one, I was getting some way high bids, so um.
Is it done, is this for the transfer station?
Yeah, and at the north transfer station in Boardman, we have already built a pit, so all I need is a scale to go inside and then south end. It's just gonna be.
Above ground.
Above ground, and visual vision, a portable one.
Just yes.
Yeah, just scales, just uh it'd be helped with um better clarification, right now they go off a cubic yard. Size and it's not consistent. It depends on who they know, maybe, I don't know, but it's it's, we used to be consistent, if I'm getting rid of. Ten tons, I need to be charged ten tons, so. Uh that'll help that, so I'm working on that and those bits will be coming out, we'll kind of see. On advertisements on that, um then I continue to work on the plastic pollution and recycling monitoring action act. Last week, I visited with the city of Boardman, um is it Brandon, no, Brandon Hammond. And Kevin Miracle, and we discussed with the state, you were with the Q in the state, kind of what funding was available, what's out there, so. They know our needs, they know Kevin with Waste Connections' needs and uh Brandon's needs, so. Um it sounds like there's money out there to be had, I can't sell um. curb side pickup for all the rural people for plastics and so there might be money available for depots and dumpsters and trucks and stuff like that.
There's something gonna be or set up for you.
I just don't think I can make that.
No, and that's, that's one of the concerns that I.
Where the money is coming, it's it's, I just don't think I can do that, but I can definitely have depots. And um my biggest concern was, okay, you get plastic, you get cardboard, where do we take it? You know, now we take it to Waste Connections, they wait and haul it down to Portland, then we hope that somebody will take it down there. You know, so there's a whole bunch of um plans going on with with all kinds of companies, and I know the plastics. Um is huge, and now the plastic vendor is gonna be charged a certain amount to help fund some, so there's gonna be. Thinner bottles.
They can't get much, no, they cannot.
But anyway, that's the next, we're working on that, um I'm kind of shooting for a household hazardous waste event. In October, one Saturday in October at the north end. Um I'm trying to figure out how to get sharps to be able to be recycled, because the sheriff's office does the plan with the. Um prescriptions, medications that you don't usually turn them in, I'm, but you don't do sharps, so I I thought it was a surprise. Anyway, I'm working on that, um can, just can we plant itself in the sharps? They don't.
They don't?
Yeah, and I I talked to John, John will take them if he's sending out a shipment. But it's not a where I can just say how that can go, it's. It's me either, anyway, that's it, garbage.
So, and I did notice that the increase was on this month's bill, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Okay, we did not make that happen.
Oh, you did?
No, I find him every time. We visit him.
Yes, I I believe we finally got the message to the the gal answering the phone to their company and it's giving the correct information. And that's been months.
Yeah.
She's, yeah, that person's been straightened out.
Yeah, and they've had a big turnover with staff in Waste Connection. For the mission.
We're gonna handle those tasks, so I definitely. Anything else on solid waste, you can start, okay?
Okay.
Um in the roads, that July, um. Really just busy repairing blowouts, you guys know how it is during the harvest and um. Uh we go around uh chasing chasing problem areas on the roads, that takes a lot, a lot of our time, you know. Um hauling rock, so that's, that's been the last few weeks, um while chasing blowouts, we're adding gravel. Everywhere we we can, while we're out there, that's what we're trying to do, um also possible patching, um. Couple of showed up, small ones in areas and other big sections, the the Baker Lane that was brought up is my last report. So I didn't want to report on that, um. You know, we do have a plan to widen that road, was having some issues with. Um adjoining landowners getting whipped, I have determined that we have a sixty width right away on that grade that we that we want to redo. Um there's fences in the way, and of course, that brings back the whole landowner issue. Um with getting by and and that, which we're working on, I I have one last landowner to call. Um a few years ago, there wasn't. If the road crew can get rid of thin seam that doesn't need to be replaced, that's fast, easy and cheap. And the other ones we can, you know, like we've done in the past, figure out how to move them enough out of the way and get those banks slow. And if that's the case, I may not have to go to uh the engineering firm. Cause at one point, when I wasn't able to get buy-in from the landowners, I was just gonna hire our engineering firm on record and say, you guys handle it. Sounds like there's a turnaround in in buy-in from, so I may be able to do that, yeah. Uh but we're working on it, in the meantime, uh there's three sections that we are gonna patch. So that'll happen in the next couple of weeks, it's bad, I was out.
Yeah, it's it's bad, I was actually, it didn't fall and fell, here it is, so. One round of vehicle.
No.
Baker Lane, um on seventy four going.
He pointed out of the mountain.
He's off of uh seventy four. Yeah, it's about a mile, what, fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's not a real heavy traffic area, but it is a cut through, when they're coming down seventy four and they want to cut over there, try to get. The ion or or uh or that way, they'll cut through there, it's just kind of a main.
Can harvest.
Harvest, harvest is your big stock. Doesn't, and it's not even graded for that, so.
It's not.
It's not. They built that road when they were five hole and, you know, five ton, and of course, they're still there, so. Thirty ton, yeah, along with a school bus that goes up and down, so, anyway, that's kind of an ugly old Baker.
Thank you.
Those fences are built in the downtown zone.
Some of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't just go through as an excavator.
Um that would be last resort. I haven't had to do that yet.
You should get some yield off of some wheat.
No, no, I. I mean, there are basically not to spray weeds, that's a good. Um. Other, other thing I'm working on, I want to share, cause it's come up over the years, um our finger sign issue, the road name signs of the. Around the county are are in terrible repair, um and I keep talking about wanting to. You know, figure out a project to get that done, I asked the emergency managers, or money for that is kind of an emergency, no, it's not. It's my problem, I need to fix the problem.
Yeah, because.
Mm-hmm. And uh. So um we now have a list, I have a list, I sent a guy around the county, and got a list of when we're gonna get a quote. And um see about finding that um this year, if not, put it in the budget for next year, just want to let you guys know, we're working. So it's uh a map of the county and there's lots of dots all over it, where we need finger signs, it looks like chicken pox. So I guess it's fever, I'll bet you a hundred grand, I wouldn't be surprised, so, and then moving forward, we'll keep up on that, so.
Yeah, we have a plan maybe to do a percentage every five years, let's do like a.
Yeah.
Obviously, you're gonna have more. Oh, I. I thought you had something to say.
Oh, it really is clearing my throat. Here's my politics, it's like, no, it's why I'm always keeping a one ear on Kevin.
I don't know.
Yeah.
How many little deer's not gonna have to look at that place, it's maybe, that's one to get shot at.
Yeah, I haven't done many of those either, but um it's, I think it's something that if we just keep up on, like we use stop signs. It's not gonna be an issue, we just need to keep up, I don't think there need, the plan needs to be keep up on maintenance, so that's what it should be. At at one time, you know, there was a thought that if people didn't know where to drive in this county, they don't belong here, well, that's not the case, so. We're we're gonna fix that.
They still can live here and not know.
I mean, people know Baker Lane, right?
And the GPS might sound, but it's not always right.
Yeah. That's correct, GPS is not.
All of it here, or.
Usually does not, it it goes into another road, yeah, so you may think you know. Yeah.
Um, yeah, those are the big things with roads, is, are any questions?
Um I'd just like to bring one point up to the B O C, um we just went through a consultant review with Public Works. And I brought an outside consultant to kind of look at the organizational uh uh aspect and and leadership. Uh responsibilities of uh with Public Works, uh I had a really great experience, uh came in, uh. Sat down, interviewed all the top staff members there and a couple of like foremen and such. Uh provided a a good report, I'll forward that for you for your consideration, we have that finalized now. Uh one of the things uh that we're doing with that report is with Mike Hogan leaving. Uh we are adjusting that job description, not necessarily, it doesn't change salary or anything. But we're rebranding that to deputy uh director of Public Works to act as a number two to. Uh to Eric, where they'll be working together, um he'll be kind of the boots, he or she will be on the boots on the ground while. While Eric uh reemphasizes more of the strategic items, we still need to get on the the bridge inventory and. And some of the other capital improvement plans that we'll be working on this fall. Um and that's, that's one of the results with it, and plus some some other aspects that we're looking to make improvements and to the, to the. To the department, uh some great feedback on that, appreciate the participation of of all those that were interviewed and um. I think it's given us a a good checklist of of things we can do to improve, not saying it was dysfunctional or anything, but. Uh you know, they've had a lot of change up, uh you know, a lot of retirements, a lot of new blood. Uh and there's a a few concerns with some of the transition, even with the facilities and and uh.
Parks.
And parks pulled, being pulled out of it, so there was just a little bit of uh nebulous nature there, so we've we've completed that and. Um I'll be sharing that with the B O C just for informational purposes, I'll send that out to you this afternoon.
So timeline for the road bridge plan is, is all, is that great?
I'd really like to uh work on that, uh Anderson Perry's been. I'd really like to work on that. Uh, Anderson Perry's been working on that, but we just need finalized it. I mean, this is something that Commissioner Whiteholt's have been.
Right, I agree with that.
Big emphasis on that and we'd love to be able to get that taken care of so we can incorporate that into some of the budgeting for next year.
We have it budgeted, we budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars. Are you double checking to make sure it's in the adopted plan?
I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay, so we have, we we have that budgeted for and I just last week um, received uh. Basically, the quote, which I need to.
Be a straight tamer?
Yes. Still getting a close, so.
We're moving on. I'm sure we're still moving forward.
This fiscal year is important. This fiscal year, we have, have a, get that planned out.
And I think at the state level, the AOC, they do have the bridge committee still. Do any of you get involved with any of that? That um, was always something in the past. Brooke O'Brien was always on it, but I think we had. No, it was true Oasis. Yeah, me, Jeff goes, yeah, and there is bridge funding there. But Oasis had its own separate, um. I'll have to look it up, but uh, Leanne Gray was. She felt it was pretty good to be part of it. I don't know if they still do it or what is happening. They need like. Couple times a year. It's not a big door deal, but it gives you an idea. We're so. I always feel on this side of the fountains, we're. Kind of lessened out. You you don't care. Yeah, you don't bother. You, but everybody else gives all the money. So it kind of makes us.
Maybe we'll be through tomorrow.
I'll look into it and see if there's no. I can't remember. Yeah, but. I'll be there. I'll find some.
Little bit. Let's kill a little bit of life, so.
Okay, next up, we get a report from the Blue Public Transport recorded report then.
There's some uh. Those, some numbers from our rides uh, this past quarter. Uh. Don't bore you too much with those, um, but you'll notice that our our fixed route service, uh, rides are starting to pick up on our fixed route. And the uh, there's, there's starting to be a a good response there from. From people. Uh, we still are are obviously in a, a learning curve with that as far as where the best stops are located. Um, we do have, we do have our signs, uh, they've been printed. Uh, we have those in house. We're currently working on. Getting uh, appropriate permissions and permitting in place to. Place those signs, uh, to officially designate our bus stops. And and what that looks like around, around the different cities in the, in the.
So I'll jump in real quick here. I'm to Boardman's seat council last night and it came up. Um, they did ask. For a little more involvement. Um, then that process was significant as far as signage and stops. They, they, there was some concern that they, they didn't get enough saying where those were gonna be doable. So I said, we're going today as well as the. Asking for expanding the route to maybe encompass the Marine.
Um, and and absolutely, definitely can can look into that. Um. To address the. Their concerns about the save where the stops were. Uh, we actually had a sit down meeting with the uh, the city of Boardman. Um, with with their planner, uh, their engineer, their city uh, manager. Um, as well as uh. Vince, our assistant, uh, Danny Minister was in attendance and myself as well. And and took a map, uh, had had our planning department turn out a big map, locate all those stops on that map. And took it to them and and had a a whole discussion around. Hey, where, where are you comfortable? Where would you like to see? Um, you know. This is a general area that that we would like them and it seems to be the best place, but. The, you know, the physical location, whether it's here or it's there, where would you like to see it? So we, we did have that discussion, so. Um, I will follow up with the city uh, for clarification as to what their concerns there are. Um, I.
I think some of the concern and and the reason it was brought up was they were discussing their item deal. Um, so some of, some of the issues were um, where there was an opportunity to pull outs. If they were gonna have benches, if there was gonna be covered, wind protection, weather protection. So these are just some of the questions that came up. I didn't, I didn't get in a conversation with them. I was just there with Billson with me. Um, and I was like, I'm really involved, but there was still concern as of last night.
It was, were these uh, concerns expressed by staff or by uh?
Weren't addressed by staff. So.
My only comment I got is. I've been wanting to approach this as just the old citizen. I want to take a ride on the system. And I've gone on the website to try to figure out where I catch it and where it goes and when it comes back. And uh, I don't know, but if you have any feedback on your schedule or your, I mean. You know, I've. I've done websites and stuff myself, but and like eighty percent or eighty-five percent of people access. Information on the internet to their phone. You know, I use desktop. And how's our, how's our uh, scheduling set up for the phone? Is it? So maybe, maybe it's just me, maybe I'm not, my brain isn't working right, but I can't seem to get a handle on how to schedule. Doesn't seem uh, easily readable. I'm thinking, maybe it would be possible, maybe to look into actually having an app. I mean, apps aren't that expensive. There's people who, all over the world, will build you an app and just tell them what you want, you know, and.
So intuitive is what I think needs to be.
Listen, I want to know. About that. Well, I'm looking for those. I think I'll take a ride on the system, see how it works, you know? Riding board, following the person. And I had a hard time. I never did figure out because I didn't, I needed to know when it was gonna back and stuff.
Um, so to to answer, to answer the question, uh, we have had feedback, feedback that we have received. Uh, was it, people didn't want to download another app? They had rather it just be uh. More web based, uh, where they could, they could go to. So we, we opted to go QR codes that would take you to uh, the website that could, would get you to the schedule. The other thing is we worked with the planning, uh, worked with Steven and planning on the, on the mapping. Uh, and then. I won't call it a totally interactive map, but it does have a location service built into it. So if you have the location turned on on your device. Uh, and you're on that map, it'll show you the closest stops relative to where you're at with your device. And and also, if you click on that near stop to you, it shows the times immediately before. Um, there and immediately after there. So it it does have an interactive component. Um, I've, I've pulled it up and used it on my phone. Um, but. It, it does, it's still, it still needs to work. Um, optimization to to be used on a phone. Uh, that piece of it works. The the interactive map part of it does work well, but the scheduling piece of it. Uh, on the phone, it, the optimization's just not quite there and it's not my specialty area to, to build a website. Um, the, the map, the interactive map piece.
Not the map, but because the map doesn't tell you, like I said, if I'm just Joe Simpson. And I want to get a ride to Boardman back, uh, you know. Where I don't want to be interacting with that to find out where to park my car, what time the bus comes. When, when it gets to Boardman, when it's gonna get back. That's not where I find that information. I found out with schedule.
Correct. And and so on interactive map, if you do click on the stop, it will pull up. That, that piece of the schedule and it, it will give you some of that information and that's the piece of the.
Okay.
When you, when you do have it on your screen, on your, if it's on a tablet, it it's a little better. So it's not that component of it. You have to kind of scroll back and forth. It's not just really optimized well. The other piece of it, that's only been live for. Maybe a month at this point.
It's an hour or two before then. So I'll go back and check it still, but I'm just something I wanted to give you some feedback on. I'm not, I'm not on that. There are a lot of apps. You can just stick it down a little bit. So if you can't do web based, it's probably good.
So that was, that was the feedback we did receive initially. Right, um. The other thing I was, I was gonna let you know about is, is with fair coming up, uh, we've, we've kind of worked with Sue and and and. A little bit and and so we've uh, got some, some. Routes that will operate during fair that will allow people to be able to travel from. You know, the, the locales within the county, within the North End, and people will come to fair and and get back each day of of the week. So. Uh, we'll be having a stop there at the, at the fairgrounds and and so. Uh, and it should run late enough that people will be able to go to rodeo and things like that as well. So, so people won't have to uh. Worry so much about driving up here and finding parking or. Uh, you know, how to get from the, from the North End down to the South End of the county for, for fair and rodeo. So we're, we're excited about that. We hope to see a big.
How do I get my pig down here?
If you, if you get your animal here initially, then then you won't have to worry about traveling after that. So as long as you get here on Wednesday, then then after that, we'll, we can get you back and forth. So. So we are excited about being able to to offer that and and hopefully it's an opportunity for us to. You know, showcase the, the transportation piece to people that wouldn't. Uh, maybe normally think about using it and be like, oh, wait a minute, traffics, you know, there's gonna be a lot of traffic down there. There's gonna be a lot of parking, you know, be challenged. What if we just ride the bus? It's not gonna cost us anything. So, so that's our hopes and our, our goal there.
So the David's point, where are people going to be able to find that information? When the bus will be leaving from north to south?
So our goal is to to roll all that out either. Later today, because we've just finalized how this, how the, this is gonna impact our schedule. So either roll it out later today or first thing tomorrow. Um, we're, we'll work with, you know, Facebook, we'll work with getting it to. Uh, everyone on a, on a, a mailing list that we've compiled. Uh, as well as, we'll put, we'll put flyers together that will. Um, then, then go out to everybody that's on that mailing list. So if they want to, you know, there's a lot of employers that are on that. We'll, we'll in mail it internally to to all staff at the, the county as well. So hopefully we can roll it out that way. Um, and then. One of the things I I would hope or like to see is to, is to be able to include it with the fair. Uh, information that that rolls out with the, with the fair information. So working with Sue to get it out on, on the. Facebook and 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 webpage for the barren study. So I think that's uh, that's all I have for the day. Is there any questions? Or anything?
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all have, have a good day and. I'm gonna go back north.
Head on, okay. Your last reported finance department.
Good morning. So I uh, just kind of talk through some of the. Significant items that have going on and. Status of those. Um. First thing, as uh. You may, may not be aware, our uh, fiscal year end. Just kind of talk the list for activities in the department right now, June thirty of this, of this year. And we um. Keep the books open for ninety days essentially to capture any of those transactions and the number of adjustments, the stuff that we have to do. Um, anything that comes in, that's attributable to the prior fiscal year and. As well as to uh, do our year end uh, accounting activities to uh, support the audit. And so. Um, we'll anticipate. Closing the year, um, probably at the end of uh. By end of September. That's consistent with how we typically do that. Um. That leads into the audits. And I say audits plural, um, just to. We have, we currently have four different audit engagements going with our audit firm. Um, we are still working on the fiscal year twenty-three single audit. Um, we are still working on the fiscal year twenty-three uh, public transit, agreed upon procedure audit. And we've started our fiscal twenty-four uh, financial audit as well as the fiscal twenty-four. Um. Public transit, agreed upon procedure audit. Um, that's a lot. Uh, we, I, I believe that we've, in, in terms of the single audit from fiscal twenty-three, I think that we've uh, finally. Uh. Not, I'm willing gotten everything um, identified and and to, to the auditors, that's been requested. Um, there was. Uh, the major program that's being audited uh, under the single audit is um. Flap grants that the airport. Um, had, I think it was originally awarded in like twenty sixteen and it probably included in twenty twenty-three. And um, just, just tracking down. Documentation paperwork and reconciling stuff. Um, has, has been a little bit of an effort. For the fiscal twenty-three public transit, agreed upon procedure audit. Um. I had to make a decision to stop work on that. Uh, we reached a point where. The. The way that that works is it, it's this, it's basically an audit that. Department of Transit or the Department of Transportation requires. Uh, to ensure that all of the funds uh, having to do with public transit are audited. You know, that may or may not happen as part of our normal audit. This is based on sampling and testing. So there's a separate agreed upon procedure that has to be completed. Um. We uh, one of the activities, uh, one of the primary activities is to um. Reconcile the, the quarterly financial reporting that has, that's been submitted um. With our financial records and we've spent several months at this point on working on doing that. And then we, we. Identified that there were some errors in the actual financial reporting that was submitted um, that we were trying to reconcile to. Um. So we're not really sure where to go. Uh, working with, um, and this was just in the last couple of weeks, we identified this, uh. Working with the, we need, working with ODOT to get some guidance on where they want us to go because at, at this point in order to complete fiscal year twenty-three, what we really need to do is go back to the beginning of the biennium. Um, which is the prior year and do a full reconciliation of. Uh, transactions and activities related to all of the twenty plus grants. Um, since we can't rely on the reporting that we have that was submitted in twenty-three. Um, that's not something that we have bandwidth, but, but we have the ability, but not the bandwidth to undertake in-house. Um, not with our uh, other audit activities going on. So, um, I mean. At this point, the auditors cannot, you know, if they were to issue their letter on that today, their letter would say they weren't able to complete the agreed upon procedures. That's gonna cause some issues, obviously, with the department, with ODOT. So. Um, I put a hold on that. We're gonna, I'm working with the auditors. They, they are putting me in touch with a. A couple of potential firms that may have this, the expertise and the resources to. Uh, contract with where uh, we can outsource that work to get it done on time and manner. So we, we just can't accommodate it. Um, that being said, uh, we are. Now, uh, fiscal twenty-four. Uh, in, in terms of the, the transit audit, I anticipate that one much smoother. We had implemented. Uh, some grant accounting uh, system, a module within our accounting system. That uh, doesn't meet all the needs, but it's robust enough to, to get us where we need to be. We actually started that partial year through fiscal twenty-three and that's one of the challenges is we have. Good information for part of it, but we don't have a complete year, so. Um. Yeah, it's basically grant and project accounting model.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it was uh, one of the things that was. When we have the OHA action plan and the ODOT action plan actually uh, was a requirement to. Have a system or ability to specifically account for those grant dollars aside uh, it, it within our general ledger. And that was the interim uh. Solution. And it's not, it doesn't meet all the needs, but there's still, it was still a lot of manual work. Um, as we are moving forward with our ERP system project, though, that's. Um as we are moving forward with our ERP system project, though, that's a the primary driving consideration is the ability to. Need the complexity of the reporting and accounting requirements for that. So you know, that's on that in just in just a second. Um anyway, so we should uh we should be in much better shape for fiscal twenty-four with the transit audit. Um because we were using that that project and grant accounting system throughout fiscal twenty-four. Uh so. We are in or in order to keep the fiscal twenty-four stuff on time and on track, we're putting all our resources on that. And I'm working on, you know, finalizing the the single audit and then once we confer with ODOT and our auditors. Um about what to do about fiscal year twenty-three, um I'll we'll have a plan, a plan for that. Any questions? Those that's a lot on audits, and a couple of other topics, but those are. The most important probably at this point. Two other big uh projects. I mentioned the the ERP Enterprise Resource Planning System uh project. And that's moved right along and staying, uh I think our schedule slipped by about a week, but overall, we're still staying pretty much right on track with where we were at. When we uh uh initiated that project, we. Uh issued an RF, a request for information, an RF five, and uh that was submitted to um essentially any. Any IT vendor that provides solutions for government accounting or government government enterprise resource planning systems uh in general. So it went to. Huge list of of people, uh of of entities and we received our uh. And that's closed and we've done our initial uh scoring and initial review of 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 the responses uh that we received. We received um. See, five, four uh four responses that cover. The yeah, that would consider like a a enterprise system. Uh and then we had a couple of of responses that were either specific. Uh to human uh human resources information systems or even capital management system. Uh and budgeting and planning systems. And they were kind of proposed as a, you know, we don't do your ERP system. But we're best to breed in case your ERP system doesn't uh meet the needs in that area because it's some specialized uh. Needs when it comes to government agencies in those areas. So. Um. Please to to say, uh we obviously we don't have uh contracts negotiated or or final pricing or anything, but the. The vendors did provide us with. Um a uh narrow down low to uh high range uh estimate for implementation. Um if you recall budget time, the the initial numbers that we had were either. Three hundred thousand dollars to eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh the highest of what we received was. And this is, again, they gave us a range, but the the top amount uh for the highest vendor that we received was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So at a minimum, we're gonna be in about early year one. That's all the implementation and stuff. Year one, year two, um because that might that may take more than twelve months. But um anyways, we're. About four hundred thousand dollars less than uh what we had uh budgeted. So. Um that's that's great, uh great news that we um. Came in that price range. We have uh scripted demos that are going to be held. So with the the vendors at the uh project we identified and scored, we selected. Two ERP uh you know, enterprise level systems that we're gonna do scripted demos based on that scoring. And those are gonna be held uh the week of August twenty-sixth. Um and then we'll also be looking at the the more best of breed um HR systems and uh budgeted systems as well during that same week. Uh those will be. Open uh virtually uh via Teams to all of the county staff that. Had participated in the uh initial requirements and system assessment that worked that Barry Dunn uh did for us where they came on site. We talked to everybody, talked about everybody's systems and. The strengths and weaknesses and pain points and that's uh they documented all that for us and. So that that group of individuals will be invited to uh participate, like feedback uh from those demos as well. And then there'll be more routes of scoring and and hopefully get a get a. System selected and and move forward to an implementation phase. Yes, the project team is the selection committee. Yeah. And then anything will obviously um contact that. So we. Other IT. This is IT and finance-related projects. Uh if you recall back uh in March, when the initial audit report was issued. The March. In the spring, when the initial audit report was issued for fiscal twenty-three, one of the material weaknesses that was identified was uh. Lack of an information technology disaster recovery plan. Um and we were moving forward with hiring a consulting firm, Barry Dunn, again. To facilitate the development of that plan that uh been a little bit slow getting going uh just due to. Available resources and time, but we finally got that project kicked off a few weeks ago and um. The way that's gonna work, there's three phases to it. The the phase one was a planning phase and that's just where we're working on project schedule. Uh phase two is the business uh impact analysis and that's where. Um the consultants are gonna work with every department to. Uh and they're gonna utilize a lot of the information that they've already gained from our ERP system project regarding the systems and and. Uh network environment and and I for general IT environment that we have. Um but they'll do a uh one-on-one interviews with all of the department heads to kind of talk through their systems and their processes. And with the ultimate goal of developing a, you know, here's here's the impacts of a natural disaster or other type of disaster. Um and it takes out your IT infrastructure and uh affects your ability to to operate using the system with the board integrity of the data. They'll use that uh business impact analysis to to prioritize uh department systems and functions. Uh and then phase three will be the actual development of that uh of that planned strategy uh to recover in. In case of such an event. So those scripted uh the uh business impact analysis, um those are scheduled to happen the. The week of uh August nineteenth, so just comes up in a couple of weeks. Uh Matt sent out the the memo announcing it to to all staff yesterday and. Uh we'll be getting that stuff on the calendar, moving that project forward. Uh I did talk with our auditors because obviously I'm concerned, hey, this was a material weakness in twenty-three. We just, we don't have the resources, couldn't get it moving um quick enough to address it for fiscal twenty-four. Mostly because we didn't know it was a weakness until right at the end of the fiscal year, actually. Um and um. They said, you know, it's their their. Review of that, you know, and their ultimate findings on that, it can kind of be mitigated by any actions or plans or. Or projects that we have in place to address it. Uh they certainly understood that that was a big large undertaking. Um uh for for a county. So um not saying it wouldn't be identified as a weakness again, but uh. Uh there's potential that it might often. So. Um. Those are the big things. And uh I guess if there's any questions, if you have their.
Yeah, of course. Um on this consortium. Do you see any problem with the. With handling the the financing, you know, having a separate organization, so.
What you say, do I see any any problem? Um are you talking in terms of?
I'm I'm not out there asking you to do something. It's it's not like this. Oh, nation of people.
Yeah, it's hard to say doable. Nothing about it makes me, you know, I don't I don't have I don't have any level of discomfort or or concern. Um workload is. Probably the only area where I where I feel a little concerned and and we're working, yeah, I sat down with. Uh Tammy, our our finance manager that we hired, she's she's doing a phenomenal job, by the way. Um. And Tammy and Matt last week, as we were talking, as we were talking, we need to talk through some stuff. Very, I had this idea that when we hired. We hired the finance manager and and uh we built a kind of. Spread out some of the workload a little bit and it it turns out that, you know, uh she likes to look under rocks just like I do and and. In the world of accounting, when we find something, we have to fix it and uh if if there's an issue with it. And so. Uh she's turning over a lot of rocks and so we haven't really seen uh the uh the workload go down on, you know. Much at all. So. I think it's a temporary issue. I think when Matt and I and we met last week and we we kind of talked through it all, I think that we kind of landed on it. That that's really a temporary issue and we are, we are making some headway. I'm getting caught up. Um it's not as quick as as we'd like. So with that being said, I don't see. Anything related to that is a is a real significant burden accounting-wise uh and finance-wise. Um and I it fully think that we can support that. And so.
Uh I guess I could would wanna make a request of maybe um. If the if the board approves this on fifteen, would you start thinking about, you know, a lot of you brought up. The uh financial agreement between the consortium and the county. And also when we're thinking about that is not, you know, we're gonna, we should have one for your position too, you know, the administrative. Uh you know, and I don't know, I don't know exactly how to do that. I'm gonna need to provide the job description. With, you know, I I'm not sure, but. If the I I think if you're gonna be working with Kevin, you know, budgets, money, you know. And does it have to be coordination between the agreement that he would come up with for the finances? And incorporate that into what the administrator has already or put in. So that. You know, there's that that I can pull up and. And maybe Craig could tell us what's what's required in that. Does it have to go into the IGA? I know, because you have a separate one, like uh I think Craig just has one for the city of Oregon, still except. It's not part of the IGA. I've I've seen it. And maybe, I don't know, that's what, and I think you and Matt would be the best to rank those up because you know. You know what we want to accomplish. You know what needs to be with the interaction, whatever, what you're, you know.
I think, yeah, I think there's the the IGA that that would form a consortium.
Yeah.
That's the infrastructure and then the consortium would be. Uh either contract or execute IGA's or services to be provided. So I think those are separate in my in my mind.
Okay.
Um one to form and then that entity then in contract with. Whether it's the the county or contractor, whoever. So, yeah, I could, that makes sense.
Yeah, like I said, I kind of wanna. Uh I don't, I'm not trying to push everybody that, like you mentioned before, is I kind of want to get out in front of this. There's money gonna become available. I want to be able to ready to reset that as soon as we can. Not necessarily, while we can maybe do this pre uh project, but I know that's already been a little bit of talk for the city and so forth. But uh kind of just as soon as we can be able to accept money, you know.
Yeah.
But of course, you know, we have to get the IGA, blah, 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 blah. It's just part of the stick.
We'll work, we'll work together closely with Craig and figure that out.
All right, thank you. So.
Do you have any questions? So I have.
All right, and that is our response. I'll do that. I'm doing a concerning work to take it very. Uh the Hampton side of the commentary.
We just put that in there. Uh we did get notification of this, wanted to just allow the commissioners to see it. I mean. The biggest thing is we're downriver from this. And so whether we just wanted to make a uh social media or website post on this. Uh to allow our residents to know about this, to allow them to have public input. I don't know if our our county directly. Has any input from it. This is kind of a newer thing for my for my involvement, but I just wanted to. Get a read from the commissioners if you had any questions or would like the Kennedy to engage in this public comment session. I'm gonna go tell through September twentieth to make comment. Yes. So. The public meeting is on, it's already started this today. Yes.
I don't.
Yeah. Don't know enough. I don't know enough to say. And I I think, I mean, they've been doing a lot of stuff in it, Hamford, um you know, over the years. Uh. If this is hazardous stuff, I think they're on top of things, but they need to go through that public grand process and. And everything through that. I do know that our uh. Emergency management has done several drills on if there was any issues with Hamford, so they're well well acquainted with that. Um since we just, as we received this, uh we just wanted to make that available to you. Interesting that it came like two days before the actual public meeting.
I appreciate that very much. I just. I don't, what I'd be able to offer.
Yeah.
So thank you for putting that in there. I appreciate it. It's not that far away, really, you know, when you think about it.
No, but there's a there's a dam between us, so.
Yeah.
We do have one.
Yeah, no.
One.
But the one time they had a tour up there, I mean, inviting me along and I got all that and, you know, got my plats and all that stuff and then. Something came up and I wasn't able to do it. I was disappointed. I didn't.
Yeah, I mentioned it, Valerie, I think, found found the link of how to do that again. So if you're interested.
If you wanna see it from the water side, I can take you anytime.
But they might.
We can't get on, we can't get off. Hit a ski man, I was gonna try it.
I was, I was, I wasn't gonna say that. Sam, I was letting you say that. I don't wanna be presumptuous. Okay. Uh any other correspondence?
That was it.
Mr. In the courts, Jeff, you wanna do the song?
Oh, well, I guess tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Friday would be a. Free uh meeting. I haven't seen the agenda yet. I did get a text message from Mike. Wondering if uh moral counting would have any objections to re-ascend them on a letter that assats according to the systems. Or like no. So I'm, I suggest that we differently. That's meant to be on the agenda for him, but holding that on. What else is gonna be happening there? Um last Thursday, I did have an invitation to go have dinner with um Maria Pope, the CEO of Important General Electric. From Portland General Electric. She was there. Her assistant, um Wendy believes. Lee Asher, who led us in charge of Generation Projects in this area.
Lee Archer?
Yeah. And uh Josh Hagle, who's the plant manager out pretty locally, is myself. He's a middle store, Brandon Hammond, all people. I got the invitation while I was on vacation and I didn't get back to them. So I'm glad to be here to make that, because I. Just talked about what's going on in the area and projects. They're possibly going to. They've gotten money to have the hydrogen hub out there and so we're still looking at moving forward with that and potentially having a solar facility on it. All parts under.
I'll I'll comment when I look. I was gonna be in a fellow in the Chevron standing state and is uh big reading. Perfect. And on their sign, it actually says that you'll be able to get hydrogen. Really, in the future?
Are there vehicles that run on hydrogen?
There are trucks that run on hydrogen now. Um I think that's kind of gonna be. Uh the new thing.
That was the biggest, the biggest issue with hydrogen vehicles is they just don't have the infrastructure. Yeah, yeah. So it was kind of interesting to see that the Chevron station and Unatello is proposing to in the future. So. Sorry. No. I think that's about it.
You mentioned some of some public hearing. I plan, I'm gonna try and get over to that. Maybe I just haven't been to enough security for a while. Maybe I just haven't been to enough security for a while, it'd be just a little thing. See how they operate, we got a person who licensed it on there now, so. And, and just listen to what they say about some stuff, so I'm gonna go to that, like, like I said, some technicals. Uh, the other thing is I met with Rowan. Uh, with the secret man, you know, we talked about them. Get set up outside their fountain tower there. Hey, we spent about, I mean, an hour talking about prayers. What's available. So we're gonna be back to us. And that was Ryan, I already mentioned that. On about week bridge. I would deal together. We go somewhere and. Oh, went, uh, went down Monument to the fire meeting they had down there at their high school, just sort of. I got invited, had to sign a paper too about filming uh. Uh, about reducing the. The structured team, and then they gave me a. A sheet on how to call them back. It was interesting, which is.
Monument?
I know, there, there's five.
Do you have the fire mill?
No, I, no, I didn't have one. You know, sometimes you forget the dormitory that's.
Yes.
Seventeen hundred guys, sixty seven, I think it's just like huge operation. And I'll tell you one thing. Been around a while here, you guys know. Their public engagement was like. So really not compared to what it used to be. Or it used to be. You didn't know what forest service was down in LA, but still, they've really stepped up their game there. Then within the last second. Uh, went to the after fire, after.
How did that go, clean? So I, I was asked it, what you know, I was gonna try and make that with my dad and the doctor. There was concerns about. Um, and said there was possible closures of the U S Forest Service sixty to ninety days after the end of the fire. Did you hear that?
I did, I'm worried about.
So, yeah, so. If, if the forest closes every sixty to ninety days after the fire, put it potentially separate. That's, yeah, and hunting season will start literally in just a couple of weeks for.
Here's what I said, I'm gonna be actually well.
And that was who was talking to me about this. Well, and so the, the question I was asked was, if they close it, so. If you're not a hunter, you're not aware of how a process works, but every year you put in an application. And you don't receive a tag, you get points, so you go up the ladder as far as being eligible for that hunt. And some of the hunts in the area took five to six years of waiting to get that tag, now you've got that tag, so you don't have any more points. If you can't get in the forest and hunt, do I just, do I just lose my points? So that was the question. So it's gonna be a, a force or up to the fishing line to, to offer a exchange of points back. Or not purchasing.
That was talked about, I believe they said, yes, that's.
So that was the question I was asking about.
I think that, that, you know, sometimes you wonder is, is it just somebody there, I think, that just. Something with their time.
Right.
Said that I don't.
I'm assuming you would have to talk to fishing.
I know, I remember, I don't remember Cherry, you know, Steve Cherry, who got invited.
I really wanted to make it to the.
Then real quick, uh, once you cap it, we didn't know much going on there.
So yeah, so last week, we, we did go to the East Oregon Counties Association, put together with uh. Uh, Bobby Levy and Bill Hansel. Fire funding uh, opportunities, um, Paul Andrews was kind of the head of that. Good information, uh, I got forwarded a whole bunch of stuff forwarded to Matt, um, Kevin was on and you were on. So, uh, anyway, that was good, good information, uh, unfortunately. Information that you needed to know before the fire happens would have been beneficial as far as documentation, um. So, but uh, but good information, having made something we can. Hopefully won't have to ever use again, but sure will, so something to remember.
When you remember that, you don't realize the impact of, of the ranch.
Yeah, yeah, and you're not something that isn't just now, that's for years going forward. Yeah, or your fence, your fence is gone, so you can't contain your animals. So, no, that's a lot, too. So that was good, that was good information, um, I guess La Guama stuff has really, I mean. Um, I can show you on the calendar, the, the last three La Guama meetings have been canceled and so has the leader. He's supposed, he's supposed to have a leadership. Uh, he leaving this Friday, it was canceled as well as on Monday, it was something, postdoc something. So everything's being kind of put on hold. La Guama, I think the state is working diligently to get a finger, a pulse on how to go forward.
Okay, then uh, that's a, that's the last item and then uh, I'm gonna call a, a five minute recess. And when we come back, we're gonna go be, going into executive session and. I'm gonna open up the regular meeting, read the statement and then go to executive session. And at that time, I'll announce a, we're going to put into a decision, actually, so. Read the statement prior to going into executive session. More county board of commissioners will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two to six six zero two eight. Which allows the commission to meet in executive session to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duty of the public body. With regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff should be, should be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose. Any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the sessions of previous sitting hours. No decision may be made in the executive session at the end of the executive session, when we return to open session. Welcome the audience back into the room. As I stated before. There is a potential possible decision or action I fully reserve in the executive session. Okay, I'm calling the uh, more kind of commission out of executive session, back into regular session. And.
I vote to approve the engagement, Brian, local and journalist P C regarding the C B A loss and authors to charity some. All second.
Would you second any further discussion? All in favor? All the folks, most careful. Okay. Any other for, for the business from, from the commission? Thank you, everyone.